Good evening, everyone. Waiting for word to start here.
Okay.
All set. Mike gave us the word. Good evening, everyone. The first portion of this meeting is to hold a public hearing regarding an application for a liquor license for Bond Light's events and wedding LLC. So it's going to be opportunity for public to comment on this. When Jennifer is back, she just left the room. She has some reports from the sheriff and perhaps someone else.
Fire.
Fire, fire department sheriff that will explain what activity there's been down there, and actually, there's been very little, so. But why don't we pause? Here she comes now. So Jennifer, I'll turn it over to you so you could review those reports.
Okay, so as we do with all of our liquor renewal applications, we reach out to the code enforcement officer who indicated that he didn't have any concerns with the building or the property. We also reached out to the fire chief, who also did an inspection and cleared it has no concerns. And we also looked at the last year's worth of calls at the property, and the sheriff's department had no concerns as well. The notice of the hearing was run in the newspaper for two weeks, and residents were told that they could email in any concerns they had, and we received none.
Okay. Well, this is, I think, time for an opportunity for anyone who may want to comment on this request. Okay, I'll take that, that there are no comments. So I think that concludes this public hearing, and we'll take the matter up in our regular agenda. Okay. I'd like to call the meeting of the board of selectmen together for May 17, 2023. Let's start with the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The warrants have been signed. We have an agenda. Can we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion. Will you approve the agenda?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay. Minutes?
Okay, I've got minutes of the last two meetings. Make a motion, we accept the May 3 and the May 10 minutes.
Second that.
All in favor? Thank you. Town administrators' weekly update. Jennifer?
No update this week.
Okay. Department head committee chair updates. Anyone wish to speak? Will.
Just to go off of last week's, I called another surveying company. They called me back on Saturday. So I'll give him until next Wednesday to give me something, and if I don't hear from him by next Wednesday, I don't know, maybe we can just move on with the first company, because they can come June 8. They got me pencils in for June 8, so if we can sign it, like, next meeting, they can be here June 8, so. But I'll give this other company until next Wednesday, and we'll go from there.
Who is it?
Lime Pro in Sanford, so.
Okay, great.
All right, thank you.
Well, thanks for that effort.
Thank you.
Okay.
Jim Driscoll, the, sorry. Jim Driscoll, the cemetery committee. I just want to give some information on ancient and abandoned burial grounds. That's what we're working on. Every one of them qualify underneath this. In the case of ancient or abandoned burial grounds, it is often the municipality where it is located that can give the permission, simply because the descendants of the families that establish the cemeteries are no longer in the area or cannot be identified or located. Under Title 30A, Section 3104, these ancient burial grounds, burying grounds are considered abandoned cemeteries. A cemetery in which no burial has been made in the previous 40 years, which is all of these, which all are scheduled, that we're going to schedule work, fall into this category. These lots are grave sites which have not been maintained within the previous 10 years. Again, that's us. Except for the maintenance rendered by the municipality in which cemetery is located. Under the statute, abandoned cemetery may formally be acquired by the municipality. All of ours fall into this category. Regarding ancient burial grounds, municipalities are only obligated by law to care for veterans' graves, and flags must also be placed on the veterans' graves for Memorial Day. Under the same statute, municipalities may also care for non-veteran graves. Again, only mowing, trimming, brush weeds from May 1 to September 30. The only funding this cemetery committee is requesting is for tree removal in the cemeteries where our veterans are laid to rest. All other graves and memorials are mowed, cleaned, and cared for at free cost for our volunteers. Our volunteer work as a committee costs the town nothing. Under Title 13, 1101, the municipality may appoint a caretaker. In Acton's case, it's a cemetery committee, who would take care of both veteran and non-veteran graves. A person who owns land surrounding an ancient burying ground may refuse a municipality or designated caretaker access to the burial ground to care for veterans' graves. This doesn't apply to us, as we obtain permission from all private landowners. If the landowner refuses help, then the property owner is obligated to care for the veterans' graves in burying, in the burying ground, and must allow the municipality or the cemetery committee or designated caretaker access to the burial ground to determine if the veterans' graves are being cared for properly. When family members or descendants cannot be located, permission for repair and maintenance is a responsibility of the municipality where the burying ground is located. The two cemeteries scheduled for tree work next to Willie's Air House and the cemetery on French Street, those are the ones we're asking for the $10,000 to remove trees. The cemetery on 109 next to Willie's has three veterans buried there. Charles Goodwin, Oliver Goodwin, and Daniel Hubbard. Daniel was an early settler in Acton. The Goodwins were Civil War veterans, and Daniel Hubbard was a Revolutionary War veteran. French Street Cemetery was a Civil War veteran, George Hanson. He's buried there. There's also a gentleman named Ralph Rimick, and he is buried in the Sanborn Nathan Cemetery. During the War of 1812, George Washington would travel on horseback from camp to camp. He would travel with a dozen rugged guys on horseback. The criteria to be one of Washington's guards was to be loyal to George Washington, to be able to handle a gun, and pretty close expert horseback rider. Ralph Rimick, who was one of his guard, is buried in the Sanborn Nathan Cemetery. He rode horseback with the George Washington Bodyguard Unit. So, just a little bit of clarification that I heard there was some question. I saw the video last week, and we are allowed, actually, there's nothing. It's easy to get confused under home rule, public money, private money, but there's an exception when it comes to veteran cemeteries.
Very helpful, because I've heard this question about whether or not the town can or should be, you know, maintaining the cemeteries. As you point out, with the exception of tree cutting, it's basically all volunteer efforts that are.
Everything else, these guys have been doing this for seven, eight years, for nothing.
Virtually little budget is going to support cemetery activities.
Unfortunately, I wish we'd gotten this information a little sooner to put it out there, because there was confusion there at some of the meetings there.
Yeah.
I think that's what cleared it up.
Yeah, when I went to that meeting, I didn't even think about, you know, that when I.
It really wasn't an issue until the last week or so.
Well, but they, I mean, there was a question was asked, but then it was withdrawn. I mean, almost a month ago, so we could have gotten the answer, but.
The, the tree cutting, you're saying it's only happening in cemeteries where there are veterans' graves? And so there, there is a requirement, requirement, state law, that the town maintain those. So graves that do not have veterans in them.
We won't be able, we won't ask for money.
So you'll be mowing and, you know, brush clearing?
Like we're doing now on our own, for free, with our own equipment, our own tools, our own trucks.
Gas mileage, they cover all that.
That's great.
So I just wanted to try.
Thank you, and the committee for the work you do. It's, it's very important work. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry, any comment about, oh, okay, another.
No, no comment on that.
Oh, okay.
Just letting you, selectmen know that we had somebody back into the fence in front of the demo container and knocked over the two railroad ties. I am going to try to fix them temporary, but we need to address that problem.
When did that happen?
Sometime last week, we had a piece of plywood lean up against it. They must have hit the plywood and pushed the.
Do we know who hit it?
No.
Oh.
No.
Is that that metal rail that goes into the ties?
Yes. I suggest that we get some bids on putting a cement wall there with the railroad ties up.
That wasn't a great setup to begin with, was it?
No, it's not.
No. So, and you had wanted to do something different there? So have you got some thoughts about what that would be?
Yes, I, I took it upon myself again to get Pat Stevens up there to just kind of give me a ballpark figure of what it would be to, to do that cement work.
He does walls and cement.
He does walls, Pat Stevens?
Yes, yeah. And I'll get three bids from two other people too, you know, when you give me the okay to go ahead and do that, and then we'll see if we can.
What are you planning to replace?
See if we can do that in the next year's budget or a special warrant.
Planning to replace the railroad ties with cement?
Yes, to cement.
And then put some kind of rail, you know, rail guard there?
No, the cement's going to come right up to where the, we're going to do away with the fence, and the cement's going to come right up to where the, where the fence is now.
Is it a safety hazard now?
No, but we can't just get the container in there close enough and stuff is falling down in between the wall and, and the container.
This is the demo, right?
Yes.
Right on the left there, right after the building, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
No chance somebody's going to fall in there?
No, the railing is still there, but it's, you know, not attached very good. But nobody can fall down, because the railing is still there. I'm going to try to put the railroad ties back in and drill some holes and put some rebar down it to hold it together for temporary.
You didn't figure this in your new budget?
No, because I, you know, no. Postpart, we'll just kind of go off till next, next year.
Well, let's get the estimate, and we can see what to do with it, right?
Yeah, we, obviously, we got to get an estimate, and three estimates.
Yes, yeah.
And maybe even look at some other, you know, it doesn't have to be a concrete wall, because it could be one of those block block walls, you know, like those Lego block walls, something like that. Whatever's more cost efficient.
Yeah.
But you get three, three bids, and if it's something that we need to do, we may have a special town meeting.
Yeah, we can put it on.
Something we might be able to slide into that, if it's, if it's a, it's a huge concern.
Yeah. I'd like to invite you guys up to go over the plans up there, what I have approached you guys with, and some future stuff before I get DEP down here to look at what we're going to, already planning.
Well, why don't we, I mean, there's no sense in doing anything until town meeting, whether or not that money passes through for the engineer.
Well, I would like to get you guys up there with some thoughts where we might be able to do something.
We really ought to go up and take a look at it, because we may, if, if we feel this is a great idea, we may have to fight for it a little bit at town meeting from looks of it.
Yeah, okay.
Whenever you guys are available.
That's what, the 10th, town meeting? June 10?
Yes.
June 10. So let's try to find a time when we get up there. Perhaps a Wednesday morning?
Yeah, anytime.
You're open, you open at 10 on Wednesday?
We open at 10. We, we can come up and do it when, when we're not open.
We probably should do it separately, so it doesn't look like that.
It's a long. Because we're talking, oh, sorry.
Well, you'll have to post it if you're going to go together.
I was going to say, could we meet like at 2 up there? Because we have to be here at 3 for a workshop, right? I don't know, I'm just.
And it can be doing when we're not open.
Well, I'll work it out.
It just raises a question if the three of us are there.
Right, posted.
Can we just post a notice that we'll be there doing this work? And does it have to be an official, you know?
No, I mean, you shouldn't be making any decisions. It can be posted.
So we don't need a videotape or minutes or anything like that? Okay, good, good. All right.
That's it.
Great, thank you, Robin. Any other department head or committee chairs? Okay. Liaison updates. I'm sorry, someone say something?
Yeah, you had asked if anybody had a comment on anything that was said.
Well, why don't we hold for the, for the, for the open comment section on that? I should have, I should have done that. Warren Finance Committee has met twice in the last two weeks. I've attended both of those meetings. And I think that's it for me. David? Emma?
I don't have anything.
The director and I met with the engineer.
Chris?
Yes, Chris, we had a Zoom meeting, and that went well. He had already gone to the rec field and stuff, so he's going to be working up some different designs for the parking lot and potential where a playground may be put, and also the sheds, so. That's.
No, I'm sorry. I had not mentioned this to Jennifer, so I'll spring it on you guys. It's been suggested that maybe we should have department heads and committee chairs come in on some regular basis to just give an update on what they're doing. And it doesn't have, not obviously weekly, maybe, you know, have we ever done that?
We've done this. With the start of a new fiscal year, we basically make a six-month calendar and rotate them in and out.
So.
We can certainly go back to that.
I have no problem with that. I just.
No, we used to, so, yeah.
You know, we don't, we want it often enough, but not too frequently.
Right.
You know, you know, maybe every other month or something like that, we try to get everyone in. Okay? Good, thank you. Old business, road survey.
So he kind of mentioned that under his update, which I wasn't expecting, so.
Okay.
So I guess we're all set with that? We're waiting maybe one more week?
Yep. Audit RFP. We have a, an RFP that's been drafted. I believe we've all seen it.
Mm-hmm.
I had a chance to review it. The, the RFP has been modified from the prior years to reflect the fact that we'll have Barry Talbot Roya as our accounting firm, performing functions that previously were done by the auditor. The due date on that was the June 3?
June 2nd.
June 2nd.
2nd, yeah.
Friday?
No, Wednesday, June 2, 3 o'clock.
Wednesday, June 2, 3 o'clock. So unless there are any questions, I'd love a motion to approve the RFP so we can get this out. I've had a chance to talk to, called a number of firms already. I've got two that are definitely interested, one is a maybe, and we'll go from there. Okay, I'll get you the list of those that have expressed interest. So could I have a motion?
Make a motion. Make a motion to accept the RFP auditing.
I'll second that.
Any comment? All in favor? Okay, thank you. Under new business, school administration, unassigned funds. This has to do with a warrant that, warrant 40, is it 42?
4010, it's up to 42 and 43, let's see. So you have a copy of it, 41A and 42.
Okay, there are two, two warrants that have been presented. Both of them are designed to restore the capital reserve for the school to, is it 150?
75,000.
Yeah, 75,000, to bring it up to 150?
No, I don't think there's going to be that much left after the roof. Bring it up to 100?
100, I'm sorry. I had the wrong number. So back to $100,000. The two versions, one is to have the school committee fund that out of its undesignated reserves. The second is to have the town funded under, out of its undesignated reserves. Perhaps before we have the selectmen discuss this, is there anybody in the public that would like to speak to this?
Last Thursday, this Judy Shane School Chair. Last Thursday, we had our monthly school committee meeting, and it was brought to light that, that it was recommended that this money come from the school undesignated funds. We have our financial lady here. Our undesignated funds are set up differently than what, what the town ones are. Some of our undesignated funds, while our balance right now looks to be very high, higher than it usually is due to, due to the pandemic and other, other funds that have come in and other revenues, some of those funds in there are already spoken for, are already designated for something. And we're, the state recommends that we look forward to like a three-year stretch, and, right, and at the end of three years, our undesignated fund is looking to be somewhere in the 300,000 range, which is well within what we're supposed to, within the margins that we're supposed to stay in. So as we discussed this at the, at the school board meeting last week, we said, well, maybe we can see if we can squeeze some money out of our undesignated fund. We couldn't do comfortably, according to our finance director, the 75,000, but we thought, well, maybe we could squeeze out, try, see if we could take out maybe 50,000 or something like that. And the school committee members didn't really want to do that, didn't want to put our, any of our funds in jeopardy in any way. The feeling among the school committee members was that, over the past three years, the school committee has returned to the town's undesignated fund over a million dollars. We always tried to give back as much as we could. If we felt we had that, that extra $75,000 in our account this year, before we knew this, we probably would have turned that back over to the town, and our funds go back into your, into your undesignated fund. So we felt like all we were really asking from the selectmen was to, to give us back 75,000 out of that money that we had turned in. So that was a, turned out to be unanimous school committee vote, so we, we voted not to take it out of our undesignated account as a school committee.
So you'd like the town to fund that?
We'd like the town to fund it.
I have some questions.
Okay.
If you would mind, or perhaps your finance director could. First, let me say, I appreciate the fact the school has underspent its budget and returned funds to the town. You've been very, school has been very good about that, so that's not the issue here. It's, you know, you've been a very frugal organization, and personally, I appreciate that. So, but as you may have heard, the town, the, the town is looking at all of its reserves and looking at the undesignated funds for the town. And the thought is that perhaps those are more than they should be. And that's, we still need to do some work on that, but that's my own personal belief, but, you know, that's still to be finalized. And that creates an opportunity to have a discussion in the community about what that excess is, if there is an excess, and what to do with it. So from my perspective, for me personally, not speaking for the board, I think it's important to have transparency about all of these reserves and to have accumulated in a single spot anything that is truly undesigned. And I understand the school has its own reserves and per state stature. And as I understand it, it says you have to have a plan to use anything above, I think, 9% in no more than three years. It doesn't say you have to take three years, but it says that it, it has to be used up within three years, which is what your current budget proposals, I think, is, is contemplating. So it, it doesn't have to be three, it could be shorter. You know, rather than spending that down over three years, it could be spent down over two years. And I'm going to go on a little bit here, because this is an opportunity for me to talk about a topic that I, I spent a lot of time on in my career, and I think it's, it's one that taxpayers have a lot of interest in. When you think about reserves, they're there to cover risk, as I think about them. And our primary risk is budgetary risk, as I think about it, and facility risk. Something fails from a facility standpoint. And from the budget perspective, when I look at the, the town and the school budget, there are some risks there, but there isn't a lot of risk in the budget. For instance, a good portion of it is salaries, and/or it's going to be spent on roads that we contract for, and we're going to limit to it. We lock in our fuel costs, et cetera. The biggest risk we probably have is like on the revenue side, but, you know, there's not much question that we're going to collect taxes at the rates generally that we're expecting. So not a big risk on revenues, and from my perspective, not a big risk on the expense side. So that would cause me to personally keep these undesignated funds at a lower level and at a level to make sure we've got enough to meet our risk, and I think probably the bigger one is facilities than budgetary risk, and to make sure that we're keeping the tax rate as low as possible. So my, my questions have to do with, or come from that perspective. So in '22, the school had a surplus of something in excess of 400,000. And so I'm curious what the school is expecting in '23. Have we done a forecast for fiscal '23?
I'm going to call our finance director up, because, well, it would be really too early to know what our, what our, what our.
It's still too early.
It's too early to know what our revenues will be for the, for the next year, because we don't get any indication of what they are until sometime in mid.
I'm sorry, I was talking about for the current year.
Oh, this, this year here?
Current year.
Come up.
Because these undesignated funds came about by having a surplus, and so the surplus has accumulated. And so if we're trying to draw them down over a three-year period, if we're going to be adding to them at the end of this year, maybe you're not, but if you're going to have a surplus, then I think that ought to be part of the discussion.
I mean, at this point, it doesn't look like we're going to have a surplus. It's, we still have a couple more months of expenses to, to deal with, but it, it won't be much if we do have one.
And in the prior year, there was a 400-plus thousand dollar surplus. So how did we go from having an excess in the budget in, in '22 to basically being balanced in '23? I would assume that some of that excess would have probably carried forward in the budget.
No, it just goes back into the unassigned fund balance.
No, I meant from a budget, a baseline budget perspective. If you had a surplus generated in, in '22, and your budget went up for '23 by 5% or whatever, presumably, there's, there's, there's a possibility that you'll continue to have a surplus in your budget. And what I'm trying to get at is if you got a surplus, why not use that to, to fund your capital reserves?
Okay, well, she's saying that we're probably not going to have it this year. I think one of the reasons we have a surplus is because we always budget for, for instance, our high school students, we budget for the exact number that we have that we know that are going in there. If we have two or three kids that move in.
Yeah.
Then we're, we're covered for that. But sometimes we have kids that move away, and so that puts a surplus, that goes back into the surplus. The other thing is we have to budget for, for special ed, and we never really know what, what, what we're going to have for special ed. I mean, that's, that's a huge item in our budget. And we could have one child move in, for instance, with, with some serious disabilities that wouldn't, wouldn't be accommodated, we wouldn't be able to accommodate, we'd have to put them in an outside placement, and that could cost over $50,000. But you just don't know, those are the things you can't know.
But at this stage, you ought to know, because for, for the current year, you know what your enrollment is.
Oh, for this year.
So that's what I'm trying to get at, for the current year, it, did you utilize all of your high school budget? Did you utilize all your special ed budget? Because you, you had.
We got over on special.
You went over on special ed? Okay.
And our, really, our, our purpose of giving back each year has been, you know, we have been, we've hoped that it would be used to relieve taxes. That was, that's been our purpose each year, to give it back to, for tax relief for the citizens who support our budget so well each year.
You know, the, the, to be honest with you, the 75,000, it, you know, it, it's not, it's, it's the, it's the concept behind it that I'm trying to, you know, get the point at here. It's really not about the 75,000 so much. It's understanding and having, you know, transparency about what these reserves are, what are they for. In addition to your undesignated, you also have another 320,000 that's distributed to various individual reserve accounts. And when I look through the financials, those don't seem to change. Do you have a draw on those reserves?
We have drawn on some of those reserves. We've drawn on the one for facilities, we've drawn on the one for technology, we've drawn on that one. We haven't had to draw on the other one. We haven't had to draw on the other ones. But they're there for the purpose of, we, like I said, we budget for X number of high school kids going in. If we have six new kids move into town that go to high school, then that's gonna be, I don't know what the math is, but it's a, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a lot.
Is that the tuition and technology reserve at a hundred and fifty thousand?
That's special ed tuition also.
That's special ed tuition.
It says tuition and technology. That's just special ed?
And technology.
And technology. I see.
So, with the undesignated, your undesignated fund that you have now, the amount you have in there now, you've got that redistributed for the next three years to stay within the nine percent?
Correct.
So, you know, looking at, as long as you have a plan, that, you know, that's what it's gonna be for. Because you look at the numbers, it does look kinda like, oh, well, they got plenty of money. But, I mean, in the future, you know, I think it's fine to do what we're gonna, you know, put this forward. But either in the future, if we can look at some of those, you know, those, those numbers and see if, how we can make those work. But I'd be fine putting that forward, you know, this time.
I, I also think, I, I don't know, the process allows for this. But given that the, the use of those undesignated reserves above the policy level has a direct impact on the town's undesignated reserves.
Those, those are not undesignedated, though. Those are reserves that you're talking about for tuition and transportation.
No, I'm talking about more generally.
Those are reserved, yeah.
I'm talking more generally about your undesignated reserve. The extent to which you have access there, and it's planned to flow back to the town. And you're making a determination to do that over three years or over some schedule. I think it would be appropriate to have a discussion with the town about that, rather than just determining that at the school level. That's my own personal opinion. Because the town may want to see that money come faster than, than what you're contemplating. So, I would hope in the future, there's an opportunity for the town and the schools to get together and talk about these. Because really, what we're talking about is how quickly money's gonna flow back to the town. And I, I think the town should have a voice in that.
Well, we, we also, we got, we got our own problems. You know, we, I say problem, but
We've all worked.
Undesignated fund, we've got a little ours down. You know, we've got more than we should have, and, and we're working on that at this, you know, doing the same thing.
Okay. Any other, thank you both, very much. Any other comment on this?
Ray Lopez, I'd like some clarification on the warrant number. The last one we received on five fifteen actually goes from Article forty to forty-two A and forty-two B.
Right, and I think that your chairman said that an article was removed. So, it, it reads forty, forty, forty-one A and forty-one B.
Okay, so it's forty-one.
He and I went over all the recommendations, and they're in there numbered correctly. The board will vote to remove one of those tonight.
All right. The, the other verbiage that was, is being used at this ask is "undesignated", and the warrant actually calls for an "unassigned"?
It's the same word.
I, I've seen them both ways. And so, probably good to be consistent. What does the audit call them? That's what I would go with.
I believe it says "unassigned", but I'll have to double check.
Whatever, I think whatever the audit is, is, and we should
Want to make sure there's no confusion for the public.
I appreciate it. I've seen them both.
And it can be confusing. I said it can be confusing.
Yes, it is. Any other comments?
It'd be nice if they were all the same.
Okay, so we have, is this the appropriate time to take a motion on this? Or when we discuss the warrants?
When we get to the warrant, okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. Let's move on. Oh, warrant recommendations. Here we go.
So, we have the CEO here. I've asked him to be here for the first couple of articles.
Great, thank you.
Jason, if you wanna come up. So, we're gonna be starting with Article five. He'll give you just a brief reminder. And then, whatever your motions are, if you can coincide with the warrant of finance and make it approve the article as written, it's cleaner. If the text is the same. Article five, you have the warrant in front of you?
I don't have the warrant. I just have the
Okay, this is the ten to seven day ones. This is conditional use. Do you wanna give them a quick overview on that one?
Um, yeah.
It's fine. Yeah, I can share it with you.
So, this one, we're just trying to make it more easier for the applicant to, to move along in their process. So, before it was a ten-day, had to be notified ten days prior before. We're trying to move it to seven so that we can get it in the, the next fiscal week, instead of having to deal with waiting two weeks to three weeks. It's just some of these applications, they don't need to be drawn out that long. So, it was just, just to meet the dead, time deadline, make it easier for the applicant to move forward.
All right. Does anyone make a motion on that one?
Make a motion that we accept Article five?
Second that.
Discussion? All in favor?
We, we, we're not gonna do a discuss, no, no public comment on these, correct? Through the warrant? We've got public hands and everything else. If we're gonna get through this, I think it's probably best we don't.
For the, I think for the zoning, that's, that's true. For the others?
Well, the other ones, I mean, between all the finance committee meetings, everything, it's been discussed.
Well, I think we're gonna take these in bulk.
Okay.
That would be my recommendation. And, but the, the zoning articles have, warrants articles have, there are a number of them that were recommended
Different ones.
Not to pass by the warrant of finance. So, I wanted to give Jason an opportunity to explain what his perspective and the planning board's perspective on this. But when we get to the other financial warrants, we're gonna, we'll try to do those really quickly.
All right, Article six. Jason?
So, this one is a proposed amendment to zoning ordinance relative to conditional use permits. This one is for, right now, if you come in for a conditional use application, the conditions technically run with the land. Somebody comes in and purchases a property, say, somebody comes in and purchases Willie's Ale Room from the previous, from the current owners. This is gonna ask the, the new owners to come in, review their conditions, to provide the town with their, with their insurance or lien, however that works. And just lets them know what, what, how that, what the conditions on that property are. It's not putting them in front of, this one does not put them in front of the planning board or anything. It just wants them to come into the code office, land use department, and just review the conditions.
Would, would a prospective buyer be able to do that as well?
Yeah, anybody, anybody can come in.
Say I was buying a business, and it's a, it's a going concern today.
Yep.
And now, the, the permit is in question because it has to be renewed?
This one's not a renewed, no. This is just asking you to come in and review what the conditions are.
This is just a review. The permit continues, but you're gonna review.
The same way it is, but they just, this just says, "If you're a new owner, come in and review what conditions are on that property."
Thank you.
And Tom, this one did, failed zero to six with the warrant of finance.
Okay, thank you. And, okay. Do you have a motion on this one?
Um, no, not yet.
Well, do we wanna have a discussion?
What I wanna know is, why, why did this fail? Why did it fail with warrant of finance? Does anybody wanna?
Anyone wanna speak to that? Dennis?
Just, I mean, 'cause I'm, you know.
I don't remember everybody's reasons why. The committee in general just didn't agree with a few things that were in it. And it's a choice.
I don't remember anything specifically either, Dennis. So, I, I was, you know, on this one, I was like, ooh.
Is this the one that's got the proof of insurance and stuff in it?
The new operator will provide a certificate of insurance citing the Town Act and
And they said that, there was people that said that that one applied to all conditional use situations that you and then, and this one here, it says, "You must provide insurance."
What's the point of getting a certificate of insurance, Jason?
Not all conditional uses require a certificate. And usually, that is in your conditions. It's, so if you don't have that in conditions, then you don't, you're not required to provide that.
Don't we have an example right now in town of a pit that was bought by another company?
And they don't have, and insurance wasn't provided. And there's no, there's no insurance that's on that property. And my ordinance right now does not require them to come inside, come in and provide that proof of insurance.
Even though the previous owner, it was required of them?
The previous owner, yeah, and then they kinda, they just went, debunked.
Makes sense. All right. Any other, any discussion on this?
Make a motion to approve Article six.
All right, I'll second that.
All in favor?
It was written, perfect. Article seven is the solar, Jason.
So, this came about, started last year. And it was more or less trying to get ahead. We, there was a lot of other municipalities tackling this at the same time. We hired an outside consultant to come in and write this up for us. And they were also working with other municipalities. We put it in front of the town meeting last year. It was, it was voted down at the town meeting. So, we took the concerns. We changed the concerns that was, we, we removed the actual concerns that was at town meeting. And so, it's more or less just a guideline of, this is what you need to do. This is what you're, if you're doing a, a larger, medium solar farm, these are the requirements that we want you to provide the town with. It also goes with some of the, talks about the standards. I mean, I can tell you all of them, but it'll take a little bit more, if you want me to read them.
We've read it.
Right, so it's more or less, it's just putting something in the ordinance. Because right now, it's just minimal. We have it in our land use chart, but there's really not much, any description in the ordinance itself.
Dennis, you wanna comment on this one? Did they recommend not, not to pass?
Correct.
Okay.
There's, there's two things off the top of my mind, and forgive me, I can't remember everything that was
Something was about the Good Neighbor ordinance?
There was two things was, is in conflict with the Good Neighbor ordinance, certain places. And the other thing was enforcement on this, how, how different paths would be enforced. Those are the only two things that come to the top of my mind.
Had, had you had a chance to talk with Jason about those?
No.
Okay.
At this point, they've already made their recommendation. We just need to know why.
Yeah.
So, no.
I would open the Good Neighbor policy, and I guess I'm confused because I see absolutely zero confliction with the Good Neighbor policy. You just look at, it talks about buffers, it talks about noise, it talks about lighting, and, and stuff like that. So, I'm trying to, I guess I was confused how it, how it conflicts with the Good Neighbor.
So, let's not try to, I didn't wanna, I just wanted to know what the, what the issues were. Thank you, Dennis, for doing that. Any other thoughts on this? Ready to take a vote?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve Article seven as written.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay.
All right, last one, yep, mineral extraction.
Mineral extraction. Let me get, get to that one. Uh, this one is, as you guys know, it's new to the, this year, not like the, the solar. It was trying to provide more guidance for future applications. This does not have anything to do with existing operations. Existing operations are, stay the same as what their conditions are. This just, like I said, it provides, when an application wants to come in, it provides them guidance how they're gonna, what they need to provide us with. Also, it gives a little bit of enforcement to the, to the land use department. Before, there really wasn't, there wasn't much enforcement that was allowed. It was pretty much a paper trail that would go through legal. You would have to go through the attorney. It also, this one is also asking, in the conditions, that sureties be reviewed every ten years. So, the applicant would come in, say, you know, right now, we have some sureties for these pits that are at a thousand dollars per acre. These are the past ones. Nothing can be done about that. But with this one, moving forward, it allows them to review their surety at a later time.
Allows who to review it?
The planning board.
And could they change it?
In, in, with this, the way it's written, I do believe they can. But that's just, it's a surety. It's a review. And I can, I'll read you what it states.
I thought I saw a memo from council that said, everything was
From previous.
That's the previous ones that wouldn't, you know, like
Yes, okay.
Like just on a new application.
Oh, new, okay, great.
Yeah, no, this is only for, for people coming in future. Has nothing to do with
It's for new, new permits.
And I, if you want me to read you that, I can.
No, it's fine, Jason. I, I just wanted to clarify it, because there was some question about that I created some confusion the other night.
It's not gonna
I thought that was kind of a really good idea for the simple reason, we've got pits that got conditional use permits back in like nineteen sixty. We can't do nothing with them at all. And, you know, this year gives us a little bit of, you know, down the road.
Priding.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right. This was also recommended not to pass?
Correct, zero to six.
Dennis, you wanna comment? Just give a, a brief explanation? Joyce, thank you. Yeah.
There we go.
I think what got us on this one, when we read through it, if you go to number three, yep, you're welcome. And you read A, B, C, D, and E, and then you go to F, existing operations. Any, any operation involving excavation, processing, blah, 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 that whole first sentence. Such existing approved operations will be scheduled within one year of the effective date of this ordinance and every three years thereafter, inspection outlined in the above codes. So, we read that as, the above code was A, B, C, D, and E. And since, Jason, like you said today, the existing codes wouldn't be affected, which he said along, all along, this in fact affects the existing operations.
This is probably where this confusion has come. But we did get a confirmation from council that, in fact, this ordinance does not create any opportunity for the planning board to create new conditions on existing permits. So, that's, that's in writing. So, I'm not quite sure what this is, you know, how that reconciles with his assessment. But he's made it clear that it does not apply.
A lot of these, as we, we had put in our minutes, are as written. Meaning, some of them were extremely confusing
Okay.
For someone to read. And if you read this, it's, wait a minute, you know. Jason said this, but this says, oh.
I guess, I guess for me personally, for me personally, that we have on, on record a, I wouldn't call it an opinion, but a view from the, from council that, in fact, this, this new ordinance or this new
Then I would have one question for that. Was it written this way when we had the public hearing?
I don't know.
And I ask that
I believe so.
Because when you have a public hearing, what you prevent, what you present to the public
Is what you need to go with, yeah.
Is what should be there.
Okay.
You know, that's, that's just, and that's protecting the town.
All right, thank you, Joyce.
So, it, but has been modified since the public hearing from public comment from some people from the warrant of finance, from people from the public, from the actual hearing itself. And then, it was reviewed again by council at a later time.
Okay.
It was just word changes and stuff like that.
Yeah, word changes, yes.
No, no substantive changes. Okay, any other discussion?
When Charlie was going through
Yes.
Change that, and it was just little, little stuff.
Any comments, or David?
I feel comfortable where we have the council, you know, opinion behind us.
I think that's, that matters.
You know, because we don't, you know, wanna
We should make that, make, has the planning board seen that, that email from council?
We didn't meet last week.
I think it's important to share that with council, and that be part of the record.
Yep.
So that if ever there's any questions about this, it's very clear.
We'll do that tomorrow night.
That was everyone's intent.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It's been moved?
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor? Okay. Does that take care of the zoning? Does that take care of the zoning?
Yes.
Now Jennifer, have you got a way for us to consolidate?
Yes.
And could I have my copy back? Please, thank you.
So as I understand it, we're going to do some bulk voting. We're going to stop at the ones the Warren Finance didn't support.
That's right.
And a brief discussion. Okay, so.
Thank you very much, Jason.
We're looking for a motion on Articles 9 and 10, which you, which allow you to get rid of equipment and use that emergency fund if necessary.
What page you on, Jennifer?
11.
11, okay, thank you.
The emergency.
You want to take those two together?
Correct.
Okay.
9 and 10.
Your motion?
Make a motion to accept Article 9 and Article 10.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay.
All right, Article 11 will be on its own as it failed through Warren Finance. This article authorizes the select board to sell tax-acquired property and issue a quitclaim deed and put the funds in the municipal unassigned fund balance. It talks about the process and people that can't bid on it, such as selectmen, staff, those types of things. They voted that down.
This is consistent with state law?
As far as I know, it's.
Yes, I mean, I think the issue had to do with, is if we take a property and we sell it, and the proceeds are greater than the tax owed.
What do we do with that money?
There was a sentiment that that excess should go back to the property owner, the original property owner. And I think there has been a recent case where that was not the case. It hasn't always been done that way, but a recent case. And someone very smart pointed out to me that had they wanted the property owner to sell the property and pay off the taxes, they could have kept that money. So it's just, you know, the town has an expense and aggravation to collect these taxes. It takes years to get it.
And in all fairness, right, it's, I mean, in the 18 years I've been here,
we've completely foreclosed and owned, I think, two properties.
Yeah.
You know, one, there were no heirs, so there would have been nobody to give the money back to. So it's far between.
I see a 2 through 1 vote. Someone abstained from that vote?
Yes, it was a tie vote. And when that happened, the chair abstained so that there wouldn't be, they could take a positive vote one way or the other. That was, you'll see that a couple times in here, David.
Yeah, I just, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me why we have to have a positive vote on it.
Well, that was their, that was their position, and so I think they had that right. So, okay, so can we have a motion? Any other discussion on Article 11? We have a motion?
Make a motion to accept Article 11.
Second that.
All in favor? Okay.
All right, the next few that we can put together, because you've already read them, you wrote them. 12 sets the tax rate, and the interest rates are set by law. 13 allows you to authorize grants.
Yeah.
14 is the capital accounts that roll over. The reserve accounts automatically do. Then you've got the informational articles, so we can do 14. 15 allows you to expend all of the revenues.
Yeah.
If you want, make a motion on 12 through 15.
Make a motion that we approve Article 12 through 15 as written.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay.
All right. Article 16 is your general government and health and welfare. It did receive a 5 to 1 vote from Warren Finance.
But it's been, okay, so we can consider it.
Positive. All right, Article 17 is the $10,000 for the town hall parking lot.
Yeah.
And Article 18, fire and rescue, pass.
Did they, how did Warren Finance come out on Article 17?
That's 5 to 1.
5 to 1, okay, great.
18 was a 6 to 0 to support the fire department. 19, 6 to 0 to support the fire department phone system. 20 was supporting the public safety. 21 supported.
It was all the rates?
The rates were all supported. That was a 4 to 2 vote, but it still is positive.
Yeah.
And then we'll do 22 and 23. Those were 6 to 0 votes.
Okay.
And 24, we'll stop there.
Okay, so where did we start? Was that 15?
16.
16 through 24?
25.
25.
I'm sorry, 24.
24.
So we need a motion to accept Article 16 through 24 as written.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Article 25 failed with the Warren Finance, 0 to 6 vote. This is to see if the town will raise and appropriate $21,038 for the public works, building, and grounds.
Anyone want to speak to this from Warren Finance?
There was two basic reasons for voting that down. One was the $21,000 again, which has been there. And I think in District 2's explanation was that $7,000 of that was to put electricity into the storage building. And we couldn't see any reason why, where they do have electricity down there, why we'd want to go through that expense to put electricity in a storage building. It just didn't make any sense. And there was a few other things, but that was what's on top of my mind.
I don't have much information on this discussion among the board.
I think there should be someone just take up a town meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Motion?
Make a motion to pass Article 25 as written.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay.
All right, Article 20, 26 also failed with the Warren Finance. This was to vote to establish a reserve account. This was a Peck Road reserve account for $130,500, giving him essentially two years to do the job or to return to the unassigned fund balance.
I think there were two issues here, Dennis. One was, there was, there was no detail on how long this paving job was.
The question was asked, yes.
And there was another.
Of the timeframe.
The timeframe, 225. And it was explained that that was to, to give the road agent two years to get it done.
Right.
And, but.
It was a belief from the Warren Finance Committee that when you ask for money for a project like this, there's expectation that it'd be done that year. And I had spoken to the road commissioner, and he said his intention was to do it this year.
Is it a deal breaker? I don't understand what that.
I mean, we've got no later than.
Fine, I shouldn't have asked the question.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse, excuse me.
Well, it doesn't make sense is, okay, if you put a reserve fund, we gave them an extra year because it's a reserve fund.
Yeah.
Money's not going to disappear, it's going to roll over. But to fail it because the road commissioner says, well, I plan on doing it in a year, but because I have two. Well, if it's done in a year, then the reserve fund is gone anyways. So it doesn't, it is what it is.
Thank you, Dennis.
I'm just explaining the.
Yep, yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on this?
Nope.
Have a motion?
Make a motion to approve Article 26 as written.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay.
All right.
What do we got now, Jennifer?
Article 27, transfer station was supported 6 to 0. We need to do that one alone.
Okay. So we'll make a motion to accept Article 27 as written.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right.
Okay, Article 28 failed by the Warren Finance. This was to appropriate $60,000 from the unassigned fund balance to hire an engineer to assess the transfer station for future land and building improvements.
The discussion that I heard had to do with the scope of a proposal that we had received from Sebago regarding this, that members felt it was too narrow and that it ought to be expanded. I pointed out that that was simply a proposal, and the, we're voting on funding and engineering, you know, an assessment, a site assessment of the transfer station to look at a whole variety of issues we have there. And the proposal was just that. It was a proposal, it's a draft. And the selectmen have still yet to go through and determine the details of that. So if I got all of that correct, does that explain?
You got that, Tom, and the other, there was one other issue was the Warren Finance Committee thought there should be a, some of the concerns were, was a bigger plan to deal with the transfer station in the future.
Okay.
And then present what the, what the town thinks the needs are, and then give it to the engineer and say, this is what we'd like to see. Can we accomplish it? Give us a design.
What I would suggest is, members of the Warren Finance Committee come to a selectman meeting and, you know, describe, you know, put forth their thoughts on that project. And if you think it ought to be bigger, I would appreciate if that was done before we take that issue up. And we just, let you have your input.
I think, if you remember, Tom, I think I said that at our meeting.
Yeah, you did.
Your people should go to Warren Finance.
That's where I got it, Dennis.
Thank you.
All right.
The whole idea of having the engineer was to go up to maximize and solve the problem with the traffic while you're going to solve the problem with the restricted area you have. But that was the whole idea of this article.
With a, I, I don't know what proposal exactly they were looking at. And I think it was one of the members said it was very narrowly defined, and I wasn't aware of that. I wasn't aware of that, but that's okay. We'll take it up.
Has there been a proposal given by our engineer?
I think, I think, yeah, yeah, it's on the works. Yeah, I think, I believe we have. Okay, so any other discussion by the board?
28, 28.
28.
28, yeah. I'll make a motion to approve 28 as written.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay.
All right, Article 29 also failed from the Warren Finance. This was the $10,000 for the two storage containers to be used at the transfer station.
The issue was the Warren Finance Committee felt there ought to have been a cement pad below the containers. And there was no provision, no mention of that, and there's no provision in the budget. David, I think you had a thought on this.
Yeah, I was kind of mind boggled by that because they're, they're made to sit on the ground. And so when it was proposed, you know, we weren't asking for anything like that. I didn't believe, they're made to move around. So they're storage containers, so you can put a concrete pad. To me, it just sounds like an added expense for nothing. And they got, they got floors and everything.
I understand you're going to do something to perhaps level it, or?
Yes, I was planning on putting six by sixes down with, on, with stone so the water would drain out. So the container itself would not be sitting on the ground completely.
Thank you.
And I would take that out of my property maintenance budget.
And honestly, right now, with having an engineer coming in, possibly engineer, we want a mobile.
Yeah.
In case we want to build a mobile, so.
Okay. Good.
Definitely makes a lot of sense.
So have we got any, that we could combine this in?
No, this is a negative vote, so no.
No, have we got some positives after that?
Yes.
Let's just add some more positives, and then we'll take them all.
Oh, I thought you wanted to do the one step right there.
Let's go 29 through. Let's, we're going to move us along here, Jennifer.
All right, so 30 is planning and development for the forestry stipend. 31 is $3,000 for the cemetery. 32 is $10,000 for the tree cutting we heard Jim talk about. 33 is all of your social services. 34 is $12,350 for your dam expenditures. Let's stop there.
Okay. So that's.
29 through 34.
Okay.
We need a motion to accept Articles 29 through 34 as written.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All right. Article 35 is the Act in Public Access TV. This is raising and appropriating $21,087 and additional $27,000 from the franchise. E, that one was supported. Rec Department is $43,165 with $3,100 coming from revenue. And Article 37, which was $40,000 from the unassigned fund balance for the shed and playground, that one did fail at Warren Finance.
Article 37 did?
Correct.
So let's vote to 36, and we'll do 37.
Well, you can vote on them all and hear his input if you want.
Yeah, okay.
Let's do input.
Dennis, you want to comment on the rec?
Yeah, the issue, the biggest issue the Warren Finance had with this was we had given 40 or 41,000 a year ago.
Yeah.
For the parking lot. Nothing's been done on that. We asked the rec what they proposed for a playground, what they're going to put in it, what they wanted. And the same thing with the storage building. And the Warren Finance Committee never received an answer from them. And that's basically.
So you just didn't have a complete picture?
No, we didn't get the information we were looking for.
Okay, thank you.
And I need to say, Tom, I know we're about done this.
No, it's all right.
The reason that some of these things were voted the way they were was just for that reason. They didn't get the information that they asked. I remember three or four weeks ago, whenever it was, I don't remember now, when I asked about if I could have the changes that the planning board made in the ordinances on their meeting, I think it was April 6. And I said I didn't want the whole ordinance because it was too hard to.
Yeah, I just wanted to know the change.
I just wanted to know the change. We never received that. And in fairness to the Warren Finance Committee, we did invite everybody that wanted to come and talk to us our last two meetings. And everybody chose not to.
No, that's not true.
A little different, Dennis. That was a little different. I think with regard to the zoning issues.
They were given that.
You'll have to take that up with the planning board. You know, that's.
That's fine.
Yeah.
They were given the.
But regarding all of the other areas, all of the other ordinance, we specifically asked you to put your questions in writing.
Yeah, we did.
We did. And I wrote a response to that. And it sounds like some of these questions that they, that caused some of these items not to pass, they were not in the list of questions.
That's right, Tom.
So I, you know, it's not, and what I was trying to avoid was having every department head sit at a Warren Finance Committee meeting for three hours in the event that you had a question. So I was just trying to streamline.
I appreciate that.
Not in any way restrict your access to these people, but simply to move it along.
I guess my point is, that's a choice the departments make. If they want to come.
Selectmen made that choice.
I was told not to come.
Yeah, the selectmen made that choice, Dennis.
They were told not to come, okay.
Told we didn't have to.
Look, I, I thought having a three-hour meeting for Warren Finance and having every department head or committee attend without any information about what the questions were going to be and whether or not there were going to be any questions for them at all, just seemed like a poor use of people's time. And so that's why I said, get your questions in writing, and we'll make sure we get you answers. And that's, so at that point, we said, department heads, don't bother going. We got answers to questions that were posed, and I assumed that was it. So, but if you didn't get all the questions sent to us, that's the reason why you didn't get it.
Well, quite often, questions, when you get the answers, generate another question. You know, I mean, that's just, it is what it is.
Well, I've explained it.
The townspeople can, can vote on it.
One thing about this is, honestly, at the end of the day, I recommend we go down through these articles. I don't care if they pass or fail. We make our motions on them.
Yeah.
I, at this point, whether or not the Finance Committee approved them or not, we're going to bring this to town meeting. They can argue their point. The departments will have a chance to answer the questions that were supposedly not answered, and it'll pass or fail.
Okay, Dave.
All right.
All right, so.
Okay, so you were making a motion on 35, 36, and 37.
I want to make a motion to accept Articles 35, 36, and 37 as written.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay.
Okay, getting to the last one. So Article 38 is giving the snowmobile funds. Article 39 is $20,000 for the unassigned fund balance, which did, $20,000 unassigned for the road assessment, which did fail at Warren Finance. 40 is moving the rest of that ARPA money that we didn't use from the water filtration system to the West Shore Drive culvert project. And we'll stop there to get to the school articles. So those 38 through 40.
Make a motion to approve Article 38 through 40 as written.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay.
All right, Thompson.
Did that conclude the articles?
Well, now you need to.
Oh, yes, we have one more.
Between forty-one A and forty-one B, decide which ones stand.
How could I forget the school? So we have two articles here. Would someone like to make a motion on one of them?
I'd like to make a motion, we remove forty-one B.
And I'll make a, I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay.
So I'm looking for a recommendation on forty-one A.
So we're gonna make a motion?
We're gonna call it just forty-one, just so you know.
Okay, just forty-one. All right, so I want to make a motion on Article forty-one as written.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay, I think that takes care of the warrant.
That's it, so.
Very good, thank you everyone for that.
I'm trying to do, type the recommendations because you need to sign this tonight, so. Don't run off on me.
Can we, I think we can move on?
Move on, yeah.
Unless you need a, anything here you need to be on?
I'm just gonna work on it here and.
Oh, okay, fine, fair enough. Okay, you're gonna multitask. Okay, request for information.
We did get a freedom of information request from, looks like.
Can we quiet down, please? Can we quiet down, please? Thank you.
Request for information from Mr. Joe Ruma, looking for a copy of macrum nusceptic design. Just need it signed. We read them all in public, and we will have the code officer move on that.
Okay, while we're signing that, Barn Light's liquor?
We have that here.
So you're going to make a determination as to whether or not you want to sign the liquor license application you have?
Yes. You have a motion?
I'll make a motion, we sign the liquor license for Barn Light. Where is it? Where the hell is the, I want to make sure I'm gonna announce the writing. Barn Light's event, what an LLC.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? I guess there already has, there was none, all in favor? Okay. Does this just need one signature?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, fine. Okay, we're gonna sign that. While we're signing, let me talk about investment managers. We've had a lot of discussion about taking available cash balances in the town. We've adopted an investment policy. We've got an authorization through the special town meeting to invest funds according to that investment policy. I've reached out to two financial institutions, TD Bank and Fidelity. TD Bank, they both have very capable investment capability. They have people that can handle the management of the portfolio. It's a relatively straightforward portfolio for them. So I'm confident that either firm can, can do that. The fees associated with this, believe it or not, Fidelity does it for free, which is kind of crazy, but, and TD Bank charges ten dollars a transaction, which, you know, I figured there might be five hundred dollars in fees with TD Bank. So as far as I'm concerned, it's, it's close to being a wash. So what are the other differences between them? You know, in addition to the core investment portfolio, they also offer a capability to hold money that we don't want to tie up in treasury bills for thirty, sixty, ninety, one hundred and eighty days, but we want to earn a good return on it. And we want it to be safe. Well, Fidelity basically offered a money market account, which is, believe it or not, you can, doesn't happen very often, but you can lose money on money market accounts. And when there's a run on the fund and so on, it can, it can kind of break the fund. So I'm not, I'm not interested in that. TD offers a collateralized account, which basically said if you put a million dollars into this account with TD, they have made arrangements with another bank, in this case Mellon Bank, and Mellon will post collateral to back up all of those deposits. This arrangement is used only for municipal accounts. It's something they do specifically for them to make sure that they can offer a very safe vehicle. And our investment policy actually covers this. So, and quite frankly, we're gonna be moving money between these various accounts and our checking account. And I like to keep it all together in a single bank. I just think it's easier to deal with that. And finally, I think, while Fidelity was responsive, it's, it's a, it's a big institutional investment management firm, and you never know who you're gonna get when you call. As opposed to TD, they had very specific assigned individuals who will know who we are and will, will have a relationship with. So for those reasons, I recommend TD.
So the only thing you said that caught me off, and I think that we were just talking with the future as well, keeping them with our regular checking account, we're still.
No, no, this was not altering our checking account.
Okay, you said keeping them with. David's eyes lit up.
No, no, I'm sorry if I said that.
I did talk to the individual.
There will be, there will be basically three kinds of accounts who will hold our money. We currently have a checking account with.
Partners.
Partners. That stays, for the time being, that stays. We'll take what we don't need immediately, immediately, the next thirty days, and we would place with TD. And the extent to which we want to keep a million dollars extremely liquid, for example, so we can get at it in twenty-four hours' notice, they will put that in this collateralized fund. And it will actually earn four point seven percent, which is a pretty good return that they're offering. And the excess above that will be placed into a brokerage account with TD, and it will be invested in treasury bills. And currently, they're earning five to five point one percent. Now, this all compares to what we're currently getting at two percent. So it'd be a big uptick in revenue, investment income for the town from this. So I'd, I recommend TD Bank.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
We're gonna take your recommendation.
So is that a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion.
Go ahead.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we accept TD Bank as our new banking investment.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Propane contract.
So it's that time of year, believe it or not, that our company has reached out to us, and without giving you a whole lot of information, the question is, do you want to go out to bid for propane, or?
What's the number we're paying right now a gallon? Do you know?
It's like a buck eighty or two.
Didn't we get a really good?
Buck eighty a gallon? And have, am I allowed to ask, have they given us a price?
They haven't given us a price.
And can you tell us what that is?
No.
Okay, fine.
Because if you decide you're gonna go out to bid. Right. All the other companies are gonna be like. As your eighteen-year administrator, I would encourage you not to go out to bid.
How long have we been with this firm?
Well over ten years.
And have we bid it each time?
No, we go out every two or three years.
Oh, okay.
When prices go high, but.
The problem is, sometimes when you go out to bid.
And it hurts.
The reserve, reverse effect, you're gonna pay more.
Are you gonna be happy with the rate we get?
Yes.
Okay, that's good enough for me. Any other comments or questions on that?
No, I think.
All right, can we have a motion, then I'll open it up for comment.
So I'll present, if you don't want to go out to bid, I'll prepare the contract for next week. I'll tell you what the number is now, if I know that you're not going to.
Do you need an motion not to go out to bid on that?
Your words good for me?
Fair enough, then.
Dollar seventy-four.
All right, all right. Any comment on that before we go forward? What was that, a dollar seventy-four?
Yes.
Very good rate, nice job.
Look at that.
I gotta tell you, I hope I buy, buy my propane at that rate. Any other, any comment on that? Okay.
I'll get the contract running next week.
Thank you, thank you for doing that, Jennifer.
That's a pretty good deal, because I was just.
It is, until they give us a reason to. I mean, they've been good to us, they're always.
I don't know how they do it.
They're always good to us, so.
Oh, we got a poll permit.
Yeah, we might not. Actually, I left you, I left it for you.
Did you?
I think I put it in your package.
Did you? Yeah, I got some things here. Oh, is that what this is? What do you want, to sign it, or do we need a vote?
We need a motion.
We need a motion.
Okay, so. I'm gonna make a motion to accept the application for a poll permit. And let's see here, where's the location? In intersection of H Road and Acton Ridge Road.
Okay.
Second that.
All in favor? Okay. We've done the poll permit. Paving bid.
So the gentleman last week asked for us to think about going out to bid. You should have a copy in front of you. The only changes that were made, Will and I didn't have time to get together today on this, but the only changes that were made was the year. So I know there was some talk about maybe doing three years, so that's up for discussion.
Do you think you did bid three, give us three-year pricing?
I doubt it.
Yeah, so.
Then the date at the bottom.
I think we just do a year.
Actually, after we got done last week, the gentleman called me and he kind of told me that it would only probably be like two years, but if they could offer some.
He said what about two years?
He said they could probably only keep the number for probably two years, but I told him by the time the two years goes up, you might as well just bid on it, and they were fine with it.
The problem with putting out two years is like myself, okay? I just, I just called and got a price on tracks, okay? And I was like, I need, I need it for the fall, because I can't let the machine go. And he said, well, I can give you a price now. Problem is, you know, it may change within so many months. If you're gonna give a, a price on hot top for two years, you're gonna price it high now.
Yeah, you're gonna pay for it.
Because they're gonna cover the tail for two years. Just do the one-year.
Yeah, that's what I kind of told him, like, well, we'll probably end up paying more in the end anyway. He kind of chuckled, so I was like, yeah, no, we're good.
So just your approval, Will, this looks good to you? We're going to Wednesday, June seventh. Don't need anything from you. We'll get it prepared and get the bids ready to go.
Okay, great, thank you.
Do you have one thing before you go down? You had asked John Denikamp for a list of people that helped at the cleanup?
Yes.
I have it, I'm ready to go.
Wonderful, then why don't you, I'd be happy to work with Jennifer unless someone else does. I think we should draft a letter of appreciation to these folks. That's what I wanted the name for.
Okay, I think he, okay.
Was there something else you had?
Well, no, I think they were hoping you might read them.
Well, let's, let's draft a letter, read it all out.
Yeah, now I'll read the letter when it's drafted, fair enough? Thank you. Yeah. I did not want the moment to pass without thanking them for their work. I think it's incredible work, and I know that everyone here feels that way. Okay, public comment. It's the Lopez.
I'd like to thank Jim Driscoll, Jim Driscoll in the cemetery. His information was very informative. Had we had that information, I know that my vote would have changed into the positive aspect of it. So I think the missing of that information was very critical from that aspect. But I just did not want to see in small town of Acton happen what's been happening throughout the U.S. And that's, you know, the government doesn't, or they have laws that they don't follow. So, you know, we need to stop that at a small-town basis. And that, that would be my only reason that.
We're all legal now, so.
We're all legal now, so we're good to go.
You were here last meeting, right?
Yeah. Oh, for you guys?
No, Joyce got up and read off a thing, went vote.
Right, and Nancy and they both said it was all legal.
It was all legal, that was all.
Yeah, I wasn't at the last election.
Okay, so that was, that was presented last meeting, dude, you know. Because we didn't know that.
No, I didn't.
You know, and she let us know, so.
No, and they, they had asked the question a few weeks back, remember? And then they withdrew the question, so we, we weren't asked.
Well, I take your point, thank you. All right, anything else, Ray?
Oh, wait a minute.
So you're gonna get up at the town meeting and say you're gonna change your vote?
I will.
Cemetery committee, thanks you.
I guess my question on the propane contract, and I understand it's a very good price, and I don't know what the total dollar value of that is, but isn't anything that's supposed to be over X amount of dollars supposed to go out to bid? And that goes with my other comment of when we had the special town meeting where the question was asked of the selectmen, did you guys follow your own policies? And there was dead silence, and that spoke volumes.
I, I, I'll have to check the policy, but with most policies, there's an option for management, in this case, the selectmen, to make an exception. Is that there or not, Jennifer?
I'm not sure that those words are written, but they're your policies.
Yeah, they are our policies, and in this case, given what I've seen with the propane contracts, there's very good reasons not to put this out to bid. So regardless of policy, you'll always want to do good business, and I think that's what we've done. And so I, you know, someone can criticize for perhaps not following the letter of the key on a policy, but when it's done for good reason, I'll stand behind that any day. We'll stand behind that any day, and that's my answer to it.
And utilities are often exempt, because that would mean then, if we added up what every single department used for the phone company, would we all be using Verizon or FairPoint? You know, I mean, would we all be using CMP, you know, would we have to look at solar? I mean, if you add up, no individual fill goes over policy, but if you take every building and add them, then certainly. But utilities have to be treated a little differently.
I, I think the taxpayers have been well-served by going forward with this contract. That's my view.
And my last question. My last question, Jason, I believe, is that portion of that warrant article gonna be removed before it goes out?
Talk to the board, what do you mean?
What portion?
Well, there was one, there was the conflict there that.
No, no, we're not gonna change anything.
So as you just stated, Tom, you know, you go by, a warrant is different than a policy. So there's something in a warrant that says this is what's gonna be, even though it's been recorded by law, what is in black and white is what goes by.
That is your interpretation, your personal interpretation of that ordinance. We have counsel who has given their interpretation. I'll go with counsel every time.
No, I think what Ray's saying, if I can interrupt, is that he is looking at the document that was presented at the public hearing. But the purpose of the public hearing is to hear from the public. If the planning board heard from the public and they all said they want A, B, and C changed, it's the planning board's job to listen to that public, go back and vote on any proposed changes, and that's what happened.
I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about another matter.
No, I believe he's talking about the difference.
Which one are you talking about, Ray?
We'll start from scratch here, because I don't.
Maybe we're all confused.
Existing operations?
Are either one of us right, Tom?
You recall Jason, which? You don't?
We talked about the one with the conflict with the good neighbors. Is that what we're talking about?
No, I think it was the one after that.
I think we're all wrong, Tom. I think the last one, with the existing operations, we were, people were concerned that.
Joyce had read some language that suggested that existing permits would be reviewed and subject to these rules. And counsel, and, and that is an interpretation. Based on those words. Counsel has read the entire document and given an opinion that that is not the case. So I, I always go with counsel. And, you know, they're the ones that are gonna stand behind us in court, not, and I'll do respect Joyce. So there we go.
Everybody on the board just got confused over that.
Yeah. Does that answer your question, Ray?
No.
You know, not really. I mean, like I said, what's in, what's here in the future will be, will be referenced, okay? And they'll be like, well, that's in, you know, that's in the warrant, and that's in the policy, so this is what we're gonna do.
But Ray, that's an interpretation of what those words are saying. What I think counsel has done is looked at the document in total and come to a conclusion that that interpretation is not correct. They have a different interpretation, given their expert opinion, and that's why I think that's what carries weight.
Again, that's counsel's opinion.
Well, when you're paying counsel, you, I always go with their, with their recommendation.
Yeah, definitely.
I just want to clarify this. So the existing operations he's talking about, it's talking about scheduling inspections. One, one time, you know, this year, and then every three years after. Has nothing to do with.
Yeah.
Has nothing to do with A, B, and C.
Let's, let's move on, I think we've covered it.
Talk about a town.
Okay, I, I'm gonna redeem myself here. If I am correctly, because it did come up with, do you have to send out for bids? I believe if you're going with the company you have always had, it is not necessary to go out for a bid. And that would also cover your thing on the financial manager. We're not spending over five hundred or five thousand dollars. We're probably gonna be less than five hundred dollars if it's ten bucks a transaction.
Very good, thank you.
So I think both of those are covered.
I'll sleep tonight, Joyce, thank you. All right, any other comment?
This open?
Yes, please, come to the podium.
He sent you that email. He sent you a lengthy email that you would have gotten.
Steve, like East Shore Drive, and I sent you all an email late Friday afternoon concerning the speed on it. And so basically, what has been going on for the last few years, it's increasingly getting faster and faster. A lot of younger drivers, and I realize it's about a mile and a half length. So if you're at the end, it does take a while, it's twenty miles an hour. Now, we're thickly settled, twenty is fast enough. You know, you can, you can live with twenty-five, but some of these people are going forty-plus. And, and I've only been, been run down almost three times walking my dog. So the last time, I, I got a little infuriated, I called the deputies, I said, can you guys come down? Show your presence on it, use my driveway, I'm right in the middle of this little racetrack. on it, use my driveway, I'm right in the middle of this little racetrack, so just put your windows down, you'll hear them coming, and just put the, put the gun on them and let them know, write a few tickets, it'll slow them down. Both times, they said, come to you guys, and you guys solve the problem with a speed bump, I'm, I'd be happy with a speed bump.
Did he not go down there and run traffic? Because he contacted me, so I won't, he never went down there and ran traffic?
No, he came down, um, let me see, where do I have it, uh...
Because he spoke to me about this as well.
I want to say it was, you see, May sixth, he drove down by my house around five o'clock, turned around and left.
So, I'm, I'm...
And then I didn't see another one until yesterday.
He said that, what about the speed bump?
He wants, he said for you folks to put in speed bumps on my street to help, and I, and I'm all for that.
Yeah, I know.
I am, I am, because, because this isn't an issue in the wintertime, you can have the removals.
So, yeah, but, I've, I've been on, I was road commissioner for ten years.
I, I get it.
No, 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 the plowing, you know, you can get the ones to remove and stuff, but, you know, we, we've had this issue with other roads, I think East Shore Drive, you're not the only one that's ever complained about this.
Oh, I know, it's in what's up in Acton, all, all the comments.
You're not the only one that asks for speed bumps, because it's happened before, and I've looked into it back when I was road commissioner, and we talked to the state and everything else, and they recommended not to do that.
Right.
And because what ends up happening is, unfortunately, by putting in a speed bump, what you're doing is you're punishing the people who go slow, okay?